All right, it is 5:05. Let's go ahead and call this thing to order.
She's here, she's just in the back.
Yes.
Probably one stall.
Everybody's here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
All righty, we will go ahead and have the implication. I'm going to ask Councilmember Bryant.
Sure.
Great.
I bow your head to me. Our Emily, Father, we just come here and just thank you and praise you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. We ask you, Thee, with those with the city of Midland and the catastrophe they've had this last day, just be with them, God, direct them, and be comforting during this time. We ask you, dear Lord, to be with our city as a support and also as we go through our meeting and the agenda tonight, that our decisions are based on your needs and your wants and your things. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Number one, consider a bid award of replacement, repairs, replacement of a safety service. Mr. Patrick.
I see.
You have a minute and a half now.
I made that. We have eight park sites that have got, and actually, this is a good problem to have. Our safety servicing is worn out, one in Shakka, San Jacinto, right there next to the elementary school. All the kids come out of the elementary school and they use our playground instead. And so many of these sites now are worn out and keeping it into national compliance and actually in just replacing it. It's worn out. We've chosen these particular sites. We have money budgeted that we went through the supplemental process last year, and it was approved to go ahead and make this purchase. These particular eight sites are the worst of our eight park sites that need the replacement. And most importantly, we have started, and y'all might have seen on the news, Progressive Park. We've got new safety servicing going on at Progressive Park. It is a real thick, durable, artificial turf with the safety servicing underneath it. And now that they're here, we're trying to expedite this particular agenda item, so we can do the best of economies. Since that contractor is already here, we want to keep them here, so that their mobility costs will not have to be incurred again. We'll process this agenda item and get them on it. They're actually going to use a few scraps off of Progressive Park on some of the smaller patches that they need to make, because, so the efficiency is there. It's a good price, it's a better product, this is more durable, there's more nylon fibers in this particular artificial turf than what we've had. And they're continually improving artificial turfs, too. So I feel really good about the price as well, as the installer is top of the line.
Okay. Are there any questions? Everybody good with it?
I do. What is the timeline? How soon do you think they'll, I know that on Progressive they said about a month.
Well, I said a month because of possible bad weather. They'll be out in two weeks.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What about for this, for the other parts?
Another two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Each or?
No, the whole, they can do all of them in two weeks.
Wow, nice.
They have all their crews here. They've got a big crew.
Very good.
So by Easter, by summer?
Yes. Yeah, by the summertime, we want those ready to go.
Okay. Nice.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Patrick.
Thank you, sir.
That was short.
Number two, consider an award in the way of the 2019 traffic signal approval.
So this is the job to install the traffic signal at Billy Hex and East Ridge.
Great.
We had one, our usual one bidder, Willis Electric, that does all of our signal work This is also a supplemental project that was awarded this one year. And this job, I've already gone out and bought the signal poles, and I've got them sitting down in my yard. So that should not be a delay on this construction, so.
Good. Everybody good with it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Next, consider authorization of the agreement with Kimley Horn for design and bidding phase of services for certain projects identified in the CIP City Water Master Plan. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, this one's a little bit more specific on these projects. We're looking to contract with Park, with Kimley Horn and Associates. They've been doing our water master plan to design the Northeast Water System, which is a 24-inch transmission line that will loop out in the Northeast. Comes together about where Faudry and Future 100th Street is what we're calling this extension would come together, and then an elevated tank. That project is slated in design about a year, construction about two years, so you're looking at about three years for this project.
That's Grandview, not Faudry.
Yes, Grandview, you're up. This map's a little out there, so, okay, I'm a little confused there, right. Then, the Southwest system includes a water line at 24 and 30-inch diameter coming down the loop from 42nd Street down to I-20. We need a pump station and a 16-inch main that will extend out past, uh, Kim, uh...
Halliburton.
Halliburton and Baker Hughes. Then we'll have a 12-inch tie that needs to come back in towards town. This project will also include a sewer line that will be extended out to the Halliburton area to expand our sewer line capacity in the city. And this project's probably in the timeframe, but... I think that's about a two-year project. That one is a little more critical for us in timeframe because of the developments that are occurring out on the Southwest I-20 corridor. This one is, is, because of the development that's occurring up here, is definitely pending, becoming an issue. But, so this one takes longer to do. We just need to get both of them under design and moving forward. Total cost for those, for those two design projects is $2,402,500.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
And do we, what's our process in deciding to use Kimley Horn?
Uh, Kimley Horn was the firm that has developed the plan for us. They're knowledgeable about the reasons we need these sizes and these lines and where we're looking at placing them. So they are already on, they're ahead of the curve in terms of everything. We've had good experience with them on the, on the project with the master plan and demonstrated good capacity for us and done a good job.
Any other questions?
How are we paying for this, Michael?
Well, I mean, this is part of a, kind of a broader, we've got the money to pay for this now. Thompson, Thompson has the ability to do that. But this really is part of kind of the larger question of how did we pay for the actual lines?
Doing the work.
Yeah, doing the work. The fact of the matter is, though, is that this design work in itself takes a couple of years. So we are, we are looking at various options to bring you at some point, so you can make a decision on how you actually want to pay for the actual infrastructure. And that could be, it should be bad, it should be bonds, increased fees, rate increases. I mean, there's a whole myriad of different options for you guys to consider and protect.
The design work itself, I believe this one is out of the Pioneer Fund, so we'll be allocating Pioneer revenues for this project, for the design. The construction projects, as Michael was saying, are such, will require enough money that we will likely have to do bonds no matter what, but they will be funded either through our rate structure or other areas that we've funded.
So the 2.4 is just for the design?
Yes.
And just for those members that are new, that's one of the things that we have designated the Pioneer Money for, is for things that would help expand our water and service system.
How much do we have of Pioneer money? I mean, I have no idea what we get or how much we have.
If you'll give me a second, I'll give you the data.
It's a fair amount.
About 100 million over 10 years.
At least under 10.
We're giving them everything we have. We actually put in a valve so that we could ship them more water. And if we needed to, we could use raw water.
They take every bit of a contracted price and then some.
Yeah, they do.
I just don't have any idea what I want to do. I mean, I know you guys...
It'll be about 120 million.
We're guaranteed over $9 million a year. It expands, it expanses over every five years. The, so far, we're well over 20 million, and they've been taking more of the water than the guarantees. So we're probably six to 10 million, this is me talking, but six to 10 million dollars over what the projected revenue would be for this time.
And how many years have we been doing this?
About two and a half, three years. It's a 10-year contract. No, actually, we kicked
it out a year because they wanted to, it's an 11-year.
It has two five-year extensions. The first one's completely at the option of Pioneer, whether they wish to move forward with five years. The second five-year option is at the discretion of both parties.
Well, you better save your money.
So, so we probably have something in the neighborhood of 25 million right now that's kind of from them?
Part of that has been allocated to the water project, the water treatment plant design project. So we don't have that much available right now, but we do have, like, the water treatment design project with 15 million.
That was 14 million.
So out of the 25 to 30 that we've made so far, we've allocated.
Okay. And looking at some of this information that you provided, you're, they're looking at construction being completed in 2022? Does that sound about right?
Yes. That was definitely on the timeframe, too.
Yeah, or like early summer, 2022?
Yeah, I would, I always want to...
It's bombshell.
The way construction goes around here.
It's bombshell.
Add a year, just to say.
Add a year.
The Southwest one really has become kind of critical for us because we're seeing developments out here that are, and we have limited capacity out that way. So we're starting to see the need to get that water system really.
Okay. Item four, consider approval of agreement with SCS Engineers to conduct a solid waste system evaluation and master plan.
The city sent out an RFP. We sent out an RFP for the selection of a firm to do a solid waste master plan. The title of the project now is a solid waste system evaluation and master plan. The study, the study will cover many tasks, several tasks, about eight tasks. Fiscal management, they'll review the fiscal management of the solid waste fund to see how it's performing with regard to expenditures and rates and revenues. They will be reviewing our administrative management, contracts, policies, procedures, how we're doing things. Say, an area that we will look at in some of this is, right now, people take roll-offs, large roll-off, not rollouts, roll-offs. They use those for construction and debris and things like that. Right now, we do some, but we allow others to work in that area as well. So it's a competitive market. The city, we need to evaluate whether we want to expand that market or, and ourselves, or whether we want to do some other type of franchising or anything else of that. So it's, it's just to look at one of some of our best options there. Operational manage, operations management will look into how we are operating, what are our routes, are our routes efficient, how are things going when we're growing, are we got enough equipment, are we able to get where we need to do, what was the most efficient way for us to proceed. One of the things that we've talked about in is evaluation of whether transfer stations may become efficient for us, because we do have trucks that have to drive all the way from out here, all the way to the landfill. And so is it better to have a transfer station where those trucks can dump, go back and pick up some more, and we use larger trucks to take those to the landfill. Customer-based development and management evaluation, analysis, development of business model and plan, that's kind of associated with that solid, the roll-offs and that type of thing. How do we want to manage our customer base? What, how should we develop it as well? Equipment management's going to help us looking with, with equipment services on what is, the trucks that we're using, are they efficient, are we able to, what's the best way for us to do, use them? Is our turnaround on truck replacement too aggressive, not aggressive enough, and how we can improve a lot of the functions that, that we need to help with the mechanics and everything as well. There, disposal and waste reduction management, this is having to do with recycling and trying to find ways that we can reduce the amount of waste that has to be taken care of, especially going to the landfill. One of the things about this is a very challenging environment right now. The China has restrictions for, China's been the biggest recycling market. If you're going to sell recyclables such as plastics and everything else, China was the market, India's second, but China was huge. Well, China incorporated standards that said they don't want any more than 10% trash in what they receive. So when you get a bottled water, you got a little piece of paper wrapped around it, and that little piece of paper's glued to the bottle, those things are trash. And so the U.S. and Europe even, we have what they call a mixed recycling market. So we don't distribute our, we don't separate our recyclables as much as they do. So now we're not able to sell our products to China in that way. And so plastics, plastic bottles right now, pretty much go in the landfill, and there's just no market really for them. And it's a national problem. It's everywhere. But we need to look at what it takes to help improve that, and how much it takes for us to try and keep those products out of the landfill. So part of the deal will be to show how can we increase our recycling ability and how much does it cost, because it really comes down to how much you want to pay to recycle. And right now, cardboard's the only thing that's really marketing well, and Amazon's good for that, I think.
Many cities are struggling with their recycling, with their existing recycling programs, because the market is no longer there. So they're at a point where they're losing money on their recycling programs.
How long are they waiting?
An hour, hour to an hour and a half.
I know we put that second scale in, try to speed it up.
Part of the, it didn't help tremendously. It probably helped some, but you still get flung back into a single road. You still have single faces, and there's just a lot of, a lot of work out there. Just about anywhere from 45 minutes to an hour and a half to get in and out.
You know, you've been talking about the, you know...
Transfer.
Transfer.
Transfer stations.
Yeah. Yeah, I liked it. Anyway, if, if we looked into something like that, say had to, would all of that debris be able to be cleared in a day, or is that something that's going to accumulate to where we've got a big old landfill of our own waiting to get transferred out?
No, by, by regulatory standards, we're needing to ship it out the same day. So it's a matter of they bring it in, they're putting it into 18-wheeler type trucks, and the 18-wheelers take it out from the land. But you can get a temporary, you know, if once in a while you had to have it, because weather, something broke it down, you can get an emergency basis where you can keep it overnight, but you are to clear the location every day.
So our trucks will be transferring to 18-wheelers?
Yes. That's the, that's if it, if it looks economical and makes sense. That's part of what they're going to study in C4.
I think it's going to be tough trying to find a location that's going to be acceptable to the public, don't you? Do you think that might be the toughest?
There are ways. I've visited a couple of these stations. They can look very nice. They can also give you another location in order to put your recyclables and things like that. They can act as a, they can be done very nice. They're usually, the transfer station itself is enclosed in a building. And so the trucks are dumping in a building, they're pushed over to a sidewall, then they're dropped into the big truck, which is actually in a lower area in the building, and then it hauls out of the building. So they can be very nice, and you will have to keep them down so that you don't, I mean, from a management standard, we wouldn't want them to let odors and things like that be an issue. But you will need a fairly sizable site. The site at 42nd Street where Solid Waste is now, at one time, was a transfer station.
The Schrader plant.
Right. Yep.
Any questions on this item?
Did we, how many people did we have respond to this RFP?
I think we had five, if I remember right.
Five.
Yes, we had five. Yes, we had five. Park Hill Smith and Cooper was one, SCS Engineers, and we had three from outside the state.
So Park Hill Smith and Cooper did respond?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? We're going to move item five down to the bottom, because that is a longer item, so we can go ahead and let everybody else get out of here. Number six, consider a resolution authorizing the city to accept LEOSE funds.
Good evening. The LEOS funds are basically funds that we receive from the state government for continuing education for police officers. We've received these funds for a number of years. They fluctuate a little bit from year to year, but this year it's $11,024 that we're being awarded. There's no matching funds, any type of grant. It's just funds that we receive, and they have to be spent on law enforcement.
Right. Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Number seven, consider agreement between Acton County and the city to access the Odyssey system.
We've accessed the Odyssey system for the last three or four years. It's the system that the sheriff's office uses for booking, basically. We add, we provide this to every officer, every patrolman, every sergeant, to facilitate the booking process. If not, we go to the, to the jail, and there's two computers set up, and you wait in line. And that just doesn't work for us. The other thing with this is that it allows us to view the photos of the arrestees. That helps for intelligence purposes. When we're looking for wanted subjects, it, it'll give aliases, it'll give addresses, that sort of thing. This, this is not the first year that we've had this. Like I said, we only added seven licenses, but for whatever reason, the county decided to create an entire new MOU instead of adding one, too. So that's why we're here. In the past, we, we've just added licenses without having a new MOU.
Okay. Any questions for Chief? Great. Thank you very much. Item eight, consider necessary signatures in connection with musical court cash following the council.
Council, Mr. Mayor, this agenda item is to remove Melissa Lindberg, who was the court director. She has left the city as of last Friday, and this would add Judge Dennis Jones and myself as signers for the account.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Number nine, discuss the potential sale of 417 North Gray.
Go for it. The next to the Rose Building.
Where'd she go?
She settled the building.
No, the quarter.
Oh, she moved to the Fort Worth there. Big thing. So let me, let me provide some context here for you, Council. This, 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 this side along with another side were offered in an RFP. This will be the third time that this, this location and the other were offered in an RFP, the purpose of which was, obviously, we want to activate downtown. So we had, the first time around, a couple of very specific requirements on, you know, we wanted something that would bring in entertainment or dining to downtown. We were specific on that. We also asked for kind of a specific timeframe on which you're going to do it. This one, we simply asked for something that would fit, at least within the context of what we were trying to do in downtown. Also, we asked that they provide a number that they would like to buy it for. Phil will walk you through what we put into the property as well as what the current offer is. Certainly, you don't have to accept this. You can say, no, that's not, we want to get the money back. But you really probably need to evaluate this again in the context of what we're trying to accomplish in downtown. So the gentleman that has proposed on this has proposed kind of a certain use, and again, Phil will walk you through that.
And this is where is this?
This is 417 North Gray, next to the...
Next to the Rose Building. I think it's the one, it's the vacant space now.
Now that it tore down.
Yes, ma'am. And originally, it was a furniture store between the Rose Building and the Jibs Big and Tall. And last year, we had the building demo. We did look at the possibility of saving the structure, but the roofing come in, the building was in, is in very poor shape, and the city took, took it over. So it was best and recommended that we demo the structure and sell it as an infill structure for development. So the city was purchased in 2016, had a 5,000 square foot structure on it, and it was purchased by the city for $85,805. We did do an asbestos abatement through the approval of council, and it was completed last March. It was a total of $50,000 for the abatement and the air monitoring and the demo. The structure or the lot itself is a 45 by 140 approximate, so it's, that's the size that can be developed there. So with the, the purchase and asbestos and abatement, the total investment we have in the property as a city is $135,805. So as Mr. Mararo stated, we did put this out for bid three separate occasions. The first occasions, we, we put it out, we had, we used an RFP process, a request for proposal process. So the individuals could tell us what they wanted to put in the location. There were some scored criteria in there, and we did not receive any proposal. And this last time, we opened up bids on the 19th of February, and we received one bid that was, that was received. And it's important to note that during each of these solicitations for bids, at least 25 individuals received the bid packet. And specifically, this last one, there were 40 individuals or businesses that received the bid packet. So there was a lot of interest in the, in the building. However, it was, it was unique that we just received the one, the one bid. We were anticipating more. So the one bid that was received was from John Hare. He owns the Copper Key Realty that's, that's downtown. And according to the bid packet, he has stated that he's purchased the Rose Building, and what he's wanting to utilize the property for is to incorporate an outdoor garden or bar venue next to the, the Rose Building and have it open from the Rose Building into that property. So his bid price is $50,000, so that's $85,805 below the total investment we have in the property. Within the bid packet, we did state that we suggested a minimum bid price of $135,000, so that, that was made aware to potential bidders. So this is a concept that was submitted within the bid packet. This is the, the Rose Building and the main entrance that is off of Grant. So what he has here is a, is a water feature, some kind of gating at the end of the structure to keep individuals out when events are not taking place, some kind of outdoor dining, garden-type area here, and then there's restroom facilities, a bar area, and parking in the back of the, of the structure. So with, as Mr. Mararo said, we're looking for discussion and a direction from council whether this is a, a bid that we were wanting to move forward from. And if it, if it is a, a step that we want to move forward from, we can create an agenda item to put on the next council agenda.
Okay.
So if this is, this is his concept, is he, is he going to do that, or is he going to make this available for somebody else to develop? Because I asked that question.
Yeah, Phillip, and you, you have more discussion, but I think it's our impression that this is something that he's going to do, because he's talked about knocking holes in the wall and opening that space up. As far as we know, we think it's him.
So is there, I mean, when you sell at such a deep discount, is there anything that we can do that requires him to do that? Because what, I mean, I would hate for him to buy that and then in a year say, you know, I really don't want to do that, and flip it for 135.
Sure. Yes, ma'am. We've spoke with the legal department, and please correct me here if I'm saying anything out of order, but there are covenants that we can put in the contract that it's going to be developed as a, an outdoor venue, that construction's going to begin within a certain period, the construction will be completed within a certain period, and that'll be negotiated as, as if the sale is approved by, by council.
What type of revenue will we get out of it?
Well, and that's something to consider, guys. There's, there's not a building being built, so you don't have any, any real, at-the-lorm taxes that you're going to collect on it. Not having a building built, you're not going to necessarily create the short-term jobs or have the economic development impact. So to answer your question, Dewey, I would assume very little off of that portion of it.
We've had it bid out three times.
Three times.
And no really usage brought back to you, a different type of...
We've received no, no responses. Now, during the, the interim of the, the bid process, we'll have individuals call us, and we've received a bunch of calls, emails, I know Mitch Mararo has, I have. And it's just, it baffles us why we don't receive bids when it actually comes to the, to the bidding day. But we've talked to some other investors downtown, and I think some of the, the folks are saying downtown that they're waiting for more stuff to actually open before they make that, that risk of investing downtown. So, so that may be hesitation that's taking place.
Does he plan for this to be only an event center, or is he going to open an actual bar?
Again, the impression we're getting is that this will be kind of an amenity to the Rose Building, so he'll use it in his event. That's not to say that he wouldn't use it as just a purely outdoor venue.
Yeah.
I don't think we know that necessarily.
Is it going to be open daily, or is it special occasions?
That was not specified within the bid package.
Again, but based on what we're getting is this will be kind of an amenity to the Rose Building, we would, we would think that that only would be on special occasions.
Which is an event center. I mean, so it wouldn't be something that would be up in the public domain.
What's his association with the Rose Building?
He bought, he purchased.
So he owns the building already?
Recently.
Recent.
Yeah.
Recently purchased.
You know, I don't, and I may be completely off-base, and I'm going to kind of, I'm looking at Dewey to make me say, Drew, you're so silly. I don't see how we could get $135,000 out of that lot, you know, even if they were going to build the biggest, grandest... You know, even if they were going to build the biggest, grandest, greatest restaurant ever seen, I don't see how we could get one hundred and thirty-five thousand out of that lot. And so we made an investment to purchase it for the reason it was a dilapidated building. You know, we pretty much would, someone would have had to have probably torn it down, you know, kind of been restored. So, and so, I mean, my deal is, it's fifty, it's fifty thousand? Yeah, we, can we?
I mean, it's obvious that there's not a lot of interest in it since this is the third time around, you know.
There's not a lot of interest. And I really think, I mean, most things that I've seen John do, he's been very successful at. The only concern that I have is that if we didn't, if we didn't sell it right, I mean, the hotel's going to be open in August.
Right.
And I think everybody will look at a lot of things differently when it's actually open and where there's people down there. So I think if we sell it to John, I think he'll probably, I think he'll do what he said he'd do. It would be nice if, I don't think we're going to get more than the fifty thousand for it, but it would be nice if there was a structure going to be built there where somebody else has more than fifty thousand in it to be, I mean, invested in making it work. You know, I kind of hate to see that empty spot there when things are really going downtown if nobody's renting the Rose Building. But I also believe that John is entrepreneurial enough that if there was a demand, he'd probably turn it into an outdoor barn himself, so. But I do think the fact that nobody else has had any interest in part is because there's surely not anything happening yet until that hotel and conference center open up. So I guess the question is, should we go ahead and sell it now? Or should we see if there's any more interest whenever that opens up? I'm kind of ambidual about it. I'm just sort of talking about what our alternatives are. I don't think the fact that nobody has looked at it means that nobody ever will when things start hopping downtown.
Well, but I mean, if you look at it from the economic side, you're going to spend one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars on the land and that's for you to put a building on it. So are you really outbuilding, you know, your building's going to be so much? You're really going to have to have something out there that's going to turn some numbers to pay that back.
Yeah, and I don't think we'll ever sell for one hundred and thirty-five. I'm just saying, is it possible that somebody would buy, that would put a building if they bought it for fifty thousand? So it would have more, it would do more to activate downtown. That's really a good question.
And you know, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, if you put those provisions in the contract that we just talked about, it's going to make it attract, you know, we, somebody may down the line would have did more, but I think that would make it attractive for anything else that's going to happen. You know, at least it's going to be something nice to look at and...
The council, the previous council last year provided the property on which the torches will sit. But the requirement was, as part of that agreement that we entered in with them, is that they would create a minimum number of jobs for a minimum period and that they would have a minimum dollar investment, in this case was at least two million dollars. So that was a good basis for the council to say, we're certainly going to see some result of that because not only do you have jobs created, but you also have sales tax created, you have ad libor tax created. So those are other things that the council, at least when they make that decision, that was part of their consideration.
You know, of course, one other thing to throw out, John is an active businessman, you know, in our community. He already owns two buildings. I guess he owns his building, the Rilter.
I would assume so.
And, yeah, so he already owns two in the downtown area, you know.
I think he's very invested in downtown. I mean, he's really, and he's, I mean, I don't have any issues with that at all. I just, I would just, would want us to be sure that we put some kind of requirements that something is going to happen.
Do you have any idea what the tax value on that land is now?
It's going to be minimal. I don't know, I'll talk my head out of it.
Why did we buy it?
Give him a minute.
Just because it was not so...
It was one of the worst ones in downtown.
Now the Rio's like, Rio's another one.
The next one?
Well, I was just saying it's another one. Why don't we just let him go back? Why don't you go back and talk to him, see about what it's going to, and that way we can...
What he's going to do with it. Because I think he'd be a great person down there.
So what we could do is perhaps even ask Mr. Heritage to come in, as able to counsel, if you would prefer that.
I think we go.
I'd like to count.
That's the banker.
Well, and again, we knew we were going to, this was what we were going to come up with. But we have an eyesore, we knew it was going to cost us money to get, buy the property number one, number two is for the demo. And I just think that it does have value a little bit more than what that land cost was, you know, because again, there was a building there that had to be demoed. I'd count it seventy-five.
So is that the general direction of the council? We can...
I agree with Drew.
Okay.
And we don't have to do that.
Okay, that's one, two, three.
I agree.
We think we know what you want?
We know.
I think that there's, he might, would go up a little bit. I would like to hear his plan, the amount of what price we're selling.
Four seventeen. So that's what we will do. Item ten, clarification and discussion of Senate Bill Two. If y'all hadn't heard anything about this, let's talk some more about it.
Mayor and counsel, I, we put this on the agenda at the request of council members to try and provide some more clarification. And staff is still working on trying to come up with some kind of a position explanation, a paper. We're not advocating something as we're trying to figure out a way to explain it for it. Because in many ways, it is kind of confusing. But the way I would describe this is, this bill sometimes has been called tax reform. It started off as a bill to raise the, I'm sorry, to lower the amount of increase in the tax rate that a council adopts each year, which would trigger the requirement for a required election. And then that's resulted in all kinds of questions like, well, why doesn't the council want the public to know that you're going to raise taxes? Well, that has nothing to do with this bill. Different state laws already require you to provide notice to the public, you already do that. The state law notice not only says, you know, it's that the public should notice, it's a whole sheet of paper in the newspaper. Which, by the way, that bill was passed a few years ago with the strong support of newspaper group lobbies. But that law even tells you what size the font has to be because that means you have to buy more space on the newspaper paper. So we're not talking about the public's right to know that taxes are being increased. Of course they have a right to know and you provide that more than once. Those of you that live in the council are familiar with it. You have to provide notice just that you're going to adopt a budget, that you're going to raise taxes. If you're raising taxes about a certain amount, there's additional notice you have to do, which has nothing to do, it's not going to be changed. This is just talking about what we call is a rollback. So that, what a rollback means is if a government entity like the council adopts a tax rate that's going to bring in more than X percent or that's higher than X percent above last year's rate, in addition to everything else you're already doing, which really provides notice. I don't mean to sound rude, but I can't imagine a citizen in town who has any connection with any source of news media, not knowing that the council's meeting that you're going to consider taxes. You do it every year. You have to do it every year. Because under Texas, our Texas constitution, we have to have balanced budgets. And so we give notice to the public. So that rollback rate means if you raise the taxes above a certain rate, then before you can actually implement that tax rate, you have to go to the city secretary, call a required local election, which costs money, ten thousand plus. Larmont could provide more details, but, and the catch here is, you know, a council can always say, well, you know, raising taxes, deciding on money, that's a tough call. Let's ask the citizens to vote. But usually in Texas, local city councils say, well, you know, rather than calling another election, which is, costs money, you serve three-year terms, you have an election every other year or at least every three years. Usually in Texas, local city councils say something like, it's a tough call, but the citizens elected us. We don't need to go back and have an election every time something happens. We're not a direct democracy where we have a town hall meeting and we vote on everything. We're a representative democracy where the citizens of this town voted to increase the size of the council just a few months ago. They added a position, they gave the mayor the authority, the obligation to vote on everything. And that kind of sounds like the local public expects you to, since you've been elected, to exercise your authority, make decisions about it. And it's kind of scary because when you vote to raise taxes in Texas, lots of people don't like that. But you're all elected. The longest a person would have to wait in which to tell any of you elected officials they didn't like you raising taxes would be two and a half years. But we have something called initiative and referendum in Texas. We have it in the Odessa charter. You had a local example of it just a year before last, I think, or last year, where the public, if they, between your regular annual elections, if they get so frustrated with you that they think you're not listening, well, they can file a petition and they can call an election to recall you. So we, Texas is a strong local citizens-making decision state, it always has been. We already have ways where the public, if they're not satisfied with what you're doing, they can require you through the petition process to call a local election. We already have local elections for all of you, at least amendment every three years. But this law says, in addition to all of that, if you were to use your authority, make the tough decision, raise taxes above that two and a half percent above the rate from last year, well, you have to first call another election. So again, not in Texas, my goodness, we don't ever agree, all of us on everything, but most city councils across Texas always take the decision, always, that when the lesser hearts, the legislature in Austin or the Congress in Washington DC, whenever those guys vote to take away some of your local authority or your local discretion, most Texas councils and voters don't consider that a political decision, a party decision. They figure that's local control and they would expect you to be against that. That's the history of Texas. This isn't the first time a bill like this has come up. It comes up every time we have a legislative session. And it usually falls out with some people in Austin voting to increase the authority of the state legislature at the expense of the local city council, the local school board, the local county commissioners. And so there's nothing unusual or unusually political about a city council saying, well, with all due respect, Mr. Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Senate and House, if it's a choice between your discretion or this council discretion, as elected city council, we would prefer to use our discretion. So there's also nothing wrong with the legislature saying, well, we think all cities in Texas should have to do the same thing. We don't want there to be differences of tax rates or anything in Texas. But traditionally, that's just not how we've done it, government in Texas. We've allowed local diversity. We've allowed local city councils, school boards, county commissioners to kind of decide the standard of living in a city in the county. And so that's my explanation of what a rollback bill is. This is not unique, it's not unusual, it happens every time we have a legislative session. It's happened before. The rollback rate is set by the legislature. This is just their latest version of wanting to lower it, which would again, just result in more local elections. Maybe that's a good thing. I'm not against elections, but elections cost money. So it's more local elections at greater local cost. And you may think I'm being a little too forward, but it's pretty easy for somebody in Austin to say, well, a local election, you know, ten thousand dollars, that's not that much money. So just kind of turn the tables a minute. It's easy for those elected officials, some of them, in Austin to say, well, why don't you just have more required local elections when they don't have to pay for it? It's different when you're the local city council and you have to pay for it. And you might say, well, I don't think we need to have a local election every time we raise taxes above two and a half percent. Because really, if the public gets that upset, they could just do a recall petition. And the voters in Odessa certainly know how to do that. They do it again in the last year and a half. So if y'all have specific questions about the arithmetic involved or how much money one percent or two percent would cost, Cindy and the finance department could do those calculations. I don't, you don't want me doing math for you.
I think one thing that needs to be pointed out though, too, is that the state has not controlled the exemptions that are granted.
That's your local decision?
We control that at the local decision.
Yes, sir.
And ours is nearly seventeen percent. And I wish we could get that number out to everybody on Capitol to let them see what the rest of the ones around here do as far as exemption.
Yes. You have a very taxpayer-friendly, supportive, so there's nothing wrong with that. I like that, but yours is pretty friendly.
And I think I understand all of that. You should go some, this time through trial and error and fire. But I'm glad that you explained that because to me, that helps me to understand. I feel like had I had that understanding before I went out and made a decision, I would have made the same decision. But I would have made it knowing more. I think, I think as a new person, it was probably rushed. Let me just be honest, how I felt. I felt I, it rushed out there without a good understanding. Once everything else started happening, I was like, whoa, you know. I would have changed my vote, but I just felt like there should have been a little more education for the newbies. Or for me, I'll just speak for me. There should have been a little more of that, what you said, and a little more, you know, based on...
I think the we, the newbies. At least I know I have realized how politically naive I am. And one of the things that I think was a real issue that I would like to, in the future, be more sensitive to, you know, I've always thought that maybe we don't explain things well enough. And it looks like we just go in there and vote yes and, and that nobody really knows what we've gone through to make a decision. But the fact that we didn't table that, there wasn't, it didn't have to be done at last meeting. We should have, when we have people that speak strongly against something and want to be heard, I feel like we should be, we should listen to that better and we should give them the time to be heard. Because that's the primary thing that's wrong is they say the city council turned a deaf ear to us. And, you know, I mean, even, we've even been called out by the governor now on tweeting at Donald Trump now. So, you know, I think that we came across as not really caring what anybody, what anybody thinks. And I for one, didn't realize, I didn't realize that was a lightning rod. I thought, everybody in Texas thinks that local control should prevail. Well, when it comes to a law being passed down that reduces, has the potential to reduce taxes, everybody doesn't think local, clearly, everybody doesn't think that. So I would just say the lesson to be learned from this is that if people are against something, I think we need to at least give them the time, if it's not urgent, the time to voice those opinions to us so at least we will have heard more.
And even if we can't...
Because that was not a public outcry.
And even if we can't, you know, we have fifteen more minutes that we had left over, you know, before we had to go out. And we had a display up here, we had some information in our packet that probably would have made it a little clearer. And unless, you know, we were reading that while we were doing everything else, you know, I noticed it after I was picking everything up that it was there, you know. Had I maybe just known that there was some frequently asked question type things in that handout or the pictures of the police, you know, I just, it just went fast.
The only thing I would point out though, is I go back to... The only thing I would point out, though, is I go back to what Gary was mentioning earlier, is that when we do have tax hearings, we have numerous tax hearings, we have numerous budget hearings, nobody shows up. Nobody knows the facts of that we got $12 million worth of, of value in our, in our mineral rights. They don't know that. They don't know that we only have enough income to take care of our police and part of our, our fire. So, and I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying. Please don't take it that way. But on the other side of that coin is, they never come in and get educated either. And so, I think if we spend the time educating ourselves, which we do very vividly on our budgets, we go through it very thoroughly, and et cetera, et cetera, that, that, that other part needs to be heard, too.
You know, last week, visiting with a few people, really that, having the FQAs.
FAQs.
FAQs. It might be a good idea even for this next council, maybe, you know, just in case we do have people that come back in, even down in the lobby, of, you know, something like that. I mean, we could provide things to people coming in and out that might, you know, help them to understand, you know, and I think, to me, first and foremost, is maintaining our local authority.
Absolutely.
And I think, you know, there are some, one of the things that really struck me when I started seeing the numbers that were provided for us, if we want to give the employees of Odessa a three percent raise, we just hit that number. It'll cost you about a million and a half. So, we don't give them that three percent raise that we know is needed for our. Other cities, I mean, you know, it's the truth that we're, our citizens, our employees are paid, sometimes not at market value. And, you know, that, that kind of scares me, and, you know, the simple fact is, the coverage we got was totally different than the coverage our sister city got.
That's because John Lapp is the president of TML.
Jerry wrote a letter, very good letter, and he said nothing. So, you know, unfortunately, it's part of what we deal with right now. Okay. Any more questions or comments?
One thing I would like to say is, if, if we want to hold the cost of elections down, I would, for one, think we need to come up with some kind of coin flip operation.
Do you have the coins?
He has a coin.
We owe him a raise, huh?
One thing I, I would like us to think about is, because I've, you know, I've tried to figure out how you respond to these people, and everybody says you don't respond to you, you know, but I, I'm still not convinced, and one of the things they did tell us at TML is that we need to find lots of ways to communicate with our constituents, lots of ways, on the radio, or through the newspaper, through an articles, you know, so, so they know what's going on. I don't know exactly how we do that. I know that piece that's in the paper about our agenda, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about really a discussion about some of the things that, that are happening, and for people to sort of have in their mind that this is coming down the pike, and if you want more information, then contact one of us. And it doesn't seem to me like each of us do that. I don't know if we take turns, or if we have, but if we, if we unitedly put something monthly in the paper, but I'd really like an explanation of what we're doing to be in the paper. And those day morning news shows on the radio, they are incredibly one-sided, but they're also very easy to get onto. You know, I, I was ready to go get on them, and then everybody said, no, no, you can't do that. Well, maybe if, instead of being on them in a defensive posture, if we became proactive and said, here's what's going on, and I'd like to tell you a little bit about it, and if you have an interest in this, you really should come to the next city council meeting. I mean, some organized plan for communication, because I think that's a very valid statement that was made, is that we, I mean, people feel like we're not communicating.
And I think Facebook is something that we really do need to.
You know, Peggy, I don't disagree, and I swore after I saw our budget, that everybody that I got in front of at the public, I was going to let them know what our mineral rock values are, what our exemptions are. You know, we, we exempt nearly 17 percent of our capable funds, which amounts to a tremendous, it's a billion dollars, you know, and I don't know if y'all know that.
No, I didn't.
Huge. And these are things that, that, you know, I think that, that we've got to educate. I don't disagree at all. The opportunities are there. I think that, as I mentioned, I have tried to tell it to everybody I've got in front of, you know, the young people and all that, that, do you realize that? No.
Well, they suggested that we should be going to Rover meetings and programs and just saying, here's what your city's doing, you know, here's what, here's what's.
One of the things that the Ector County Appraisal District Board encourages, we don't require, is that they need to write that article once a month. It's not a requirement, but we need an information director that's somewhat younger than most of us in this room, that knows how to reach these people and say, you know.
Here's a fact sheet.
Just a fact sheet.
You know, this is the question and answer.
Yeah, this is the, yeah, this is the question that was most asked this month.
And at least it's out there, if they don't educate themselves.
And that's, I guess that's the case, and I go back, and I tell this in front of David and the rest of them, but we've had so many budget hearings, and I bet there hadn't been a total of a handful, maybe, that's shown up at all the times.
But do we, people other than you and I don't think those are interesting. I'm not saying.
And they do.
She gets excited.
I am, I am not saying that, that they, that they don't want to come in here and ask, go line by line, either, but that doesn't mean that they don't want to know that we've got a $221 million budget, and our property taxes went down, and have gone down by nickel over the last 10 years. I mean, there's enough things you can say that they are interested in.
Right. And I think that goes to getting it on to the news media, et cetera, et cetera, that that is said, you know, it is said, how much we say, how much we go.
I like, Tom said something today, I met Tom today, he goes, the people he talked to, he said, okay, where do we cut? You're in my position, I don't know is not an answer. You want less police, you want less fire, less water, less streets, less garbage, where do you cut?
Start youth and imagine dogs?
What?
I mean, it's.
That's about it, Kenny.
So, okay, well, I'm going to have Michael put something on, talk about a little bit more reach, reach out to citizens. So, we will go, Adam P., update on line P.
Before we go to that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me preempt this, because it's going to talk about, you had asked Councilmember Dean about what we have in Pioneer Funds. At the end of September of '18, we were at 21.2 million in the fund balance. We did appropriate 9.8 out of that towards the Line P, no, towards the water treatment plant and the RIO plant, the architect and design base, right? And we took 4.7 of the current year amount of 9.7 to help make that happen. So, we budgeted 9.7 in the current year's revenue, that's also budgeted as expenditures, because we, you know, zero-budget that. So, if we spend all of that, at the end of the year, we'll be sitting at line, we'll be sitting at about 11.35.
In the.
In the five, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I think we were, what, 2 million above expected revenues this last year, so we probably will be at somewhere around 11.7, 12 million. Thank you.
What was yours?
I wanted to, a few months ago, council, with the city, with the city staff's recommendation, engaged LCA, John Landgraf, to design both Lines P and Q for us. These are sewer lines that have been identified in our master plan as, as needed in order to manage development of the area that's kind of in this goldish color. Now, this is a little old dated map, but it's generally correct. So, Line P comes up and will take out the Foddy Lift Station. The Foddy Lift Station is, is meeting, is really close to capacity, and so, we're not, without doing this project, we're going to have a difficulty in letting development continue occur, because we can't take their sewer. Line Q will extend up into the, the areas that are actually developing, so that we can get it carried down as well. And so, we've asked John Landgraf to come in and update you on the progress, on the designs, and so.
Mike, you're going to go through your total report, are you?
Well, I, I've got an hour and a half, I've got an hour and a half set aside to go through that.
John, I'm with you.
You started, you finished, buddy.
This is the biggest thing we're going to spend money on for a while, so.
Well, no, it sounds like water and garbage are going to. I'm, I'm going to do this in about 10 or 15 minutes, or less. If you have questions, interrupt at any point in time, but we're tickled to death. I appreciate your confidence in hiring LCA. I'm not going to bore you with all the details and all the technical aspects, Tom and his staff, we've been going over these things for weeks and months now, and I think we've all agreed, but I'll be happy to answer any of those questions. But basically, just a real quick history, this Line P has been shown on all the master plans back when they justified building the Bob Darrington Plant back in the 1970s, early 1970s. So, it's been a part of the city's plan as development moved east, it became more and more critical. It was started, like Tom said, from the lift station here, and was built with this first, the lift station with this first mission development phase, and now we've outgrown that lift station. And as you know, there's big pressure with the D.R. Horton stuff and all of the other development in the Bushman area, and quite, quite a bit of.
So, 47 years ago, they knew everything was going to go north and east.
They don't know that they knew it, but they planned for it. But just like we're planning for Line Q right now, which is even the next phase east, and there is already some pressure that this will help, we're limited to the amount of development, as, as Tom was alluding to, Bobby Cox's subdivision here, and Colin Sewell's here, and that's really about as far as we can go with the existing infrastructure, so we have to have this other, and then this Parks Bell stuff is continuing to grow to the east also. So, yeah, they knew that, but when the treatment plant was put here next to the Monahan's Drawl, which is, was the discharge, and of course, now we're discharging the Pioneer, but when it was built here for discharge, then the gravity area that you could serve in, in this most easterly portion, and then, of course, I'd like to show you the whole map here, this is all of the sewer area for, for Odessa. And so, we've got stuff out that, that's not done yet, but, but that is planned, and then like Tom's talking about, the growth along the interstate, and then someday, we've got the ability to serve all of this stuff south of town, that there's really no sewer there, except in the industrial complex area, but all of that feeds to the Bob Darrington Plant. And what we're looking at, P and Q basically open up this, this yellow area. We did Line H, well, I'm going to get into wake history here, but I'm the oldest one in the room that knows this stuff. Line H was done several years ago. Do what?
The oldest one that knows it, not the oldest one.
Not the oldest one, but, but almost. Line H was done many years ago by the city. We, we, we did the engineering work on that, and it was designed to take care of everything inside the loop. Had that not been done, none of this beating bug stuff would be done, none of the Ratley Ranch stuff. It was all done so that we could serve everything inside the loop. This master plan shows, switch there, the master plan shows another line someday that 's parallel the loop, that will basically serve the stuff that Line P can't, that's outside the loop, and it, we call it Parallel H, if it will, and then it ties, it ties into our Line P someday, so, but that's in the 25-year type plan, or whenever it's needed. The hard part is, is trying to do these things when you're trying to catch up, and we're, we're trying to catch up, because that lift station is really, I think Ravont's worked all the magic he can about trying to figure out how to slow flows down and, and modeling flows, but, but the development that's occurring there. So, that's just a little bit of, of a history. There's some detail in, in there, a little bit more detail about that. The justification for it, Odessa's growing like crazy, and that lift station is at its capacity, and we're basically limited to whatever development can occur in northeast Odessa without it.
What's your estimation of, when we say critical, which I think Tom had used the word before, what timeframe do you think is, is defined by that?
As fast as I can get it designed and we can get it built, Louis. I mean, I, we think a year, we need to have it, I think, is, is, these other, Horton is, is got, I know personally, because we were involved in it, they've got another 120 acres of Parks Bell that they're, have under contract, Colin Sewell's deal.
Everything that you're talking about there, and then I'll pass that up to the, uh, the one person I know.
And we've got a lot of commercial stuff that's happening along 191, as, as y'all know, and I know there are several big projects that are being discussed in the 191 area.
Multi-family apartment complexes and things like that will put a real stress on.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, the Parks Bells got a 600-acre unit apartment complex that's under, they started construction, the first phase of that, uh, last week, so, that, that's coming on, and they'll start second phase as soon as they start getting occupancies on the first phase, so, there's about 600 and something units coming in there.
We're probably looking about 18 months to get all this done.
Yeah.
That's just.
Right.
Design.
No, no, Bill, we're, we're going to have design completed in the next two or three months.
Where's Midland County?
Let me show you that. They don't have it on there. It's, it's the blue line, Ector County, Midland County. The yellow line is the, is the ETJ, and, and annexation line, I'm sorry, annexation line, this is the ETJ. It was negotiated in 1983, when the Mission Country Club development started here. The two ETJs between Midland and Odessa overlap, and so, there are statutes, and Gary can explain that, so, Midland could claim here, and then Odessa could claim there, so they came up with, the two city councils had joint city council meetings back in the 80s, to negotiate that line. So, we can annex all the way to here, and they can annex there, and they've already annexed out to 1788, and we're here, everybody thinks we're growing together, we're less than three miles apart, it's the closest place between the two city limits today. So, kind of, just a little bit of history there. We have changed the alignments a little bit, and had to get some additional easements, but we've done that. We, the city's had these easements for this Line P since 1982. So, there was some thought about doing it back then, they decided just to go ahead and do the lift station and pump, rather than building this 20 million dollar project, and of course, in those days, it would have been less than that, but in real dollars, it would probably still been about the same amount of money. So, they. of money. So, they had easements. We have made some adjustments to the easement. We've worked with the Parks Bell family, got verbal approvals. Vanessa's working on getting those easements from the family. They have agreed, they gave the original ones, they've agreed to do that also. That'll save us some construction money. We talk about that in detail in the report. And then, one thing, when I get to dollars, you're gonna say, how come this is more expensive? We've upsized this line to forty-two inch, I mean, a forty-eight inch instead of the original forty-two, because we've taken this piece of line Q and are putting it here. Then that eliminates, we've upsized a little bit here, but we've eliminated a mile of thirty-six inches. So, there's a net savings of about a million dollars between those two that show up more so in the line Q, but makes line P a little bit more expensive. But I'm jumping ahead. There's some detailed spreadsheets in here comparing pipe prices. There are different manufacturers of different pipes. When you get into larger diameters, there's a lot more considerations. We are talking about forty-eight and fifty-four. The, we're still looking at a couple of other options that we're working with on staff, but all our cost estimates are the ones that are in here. And one thing that's real surprising to us, when we did our proposal and we looked at this project, we counted thirty-nine oilfield pipelines that we're gonna have to cross with line P. Once we got out there and actually did our investigation, and did the potholing and the surveying, there's seventy-six oilfield pipelines that we're gonna have to cross between here and the Darrington plant. So, that's been a little bit surprising. Chevron, I think some of y'all have heard, has taken a little more friendly developer attitude lately. A lot of that is through this Headley-Davonian unit, but there are quite a few other, there's a table here in the appendix that lists all seventy-six of them, where we found them, what the depths are and everything. So, that's gonna present a little bit of a challenge to the contractor especially, and then working those agreements out with the oil companies about crossing their lines.
Is that pretty hard ground in that area?
Yes. There was some geotechnical that was done back in the eighties. We've got access to that. We're putting that in there. We're also having additional geotechnical work. In the eighties, they found no groundwater. We're looking to make sure we don't have groundwater. If you do, you can still build a pipeline. It just changes construction methods a little bit. But it's all hard rock, not...
Not north?
Not north, not granite rock, but our good West Texas limestone, Caliche, it's all, all Caliche dig. We've been playing with in the design, we're really into the design. We give you a preliminary alignment sheet in here, plan profile. We're tweaking those grades. We want to maintain the grades to carry the flows and keep the velocities high enough so that it lowers maintenance considerations. We're tweaking grades and stuff to keep the line as shallow as we can, but to still maintain, maintain the velocities and the capacities, and we certainly know that that's a consideration. But any, so we've been able to keep this to where we're gonna have almost everything less than twenty-five feet deep, which is a good breakpoint in construction, because if you talk to the large contractors, and once they get a lot below twenty-five, then it's different types of equipment, benching down, a lot of other considerations that need to be considered that drive the cost up. So, we're trying to do that. None of y'all remember, but we had some thirty-foot-plus cuts on line H going out to the Ratliff Ranch, and that turned into be a very difficult construction project, just getting that thirty-foot stuff done. Our budgets, costs, and I know Ms. Dean turned right to that page probably, first line, she didn't care about any of the technical stuff. Kenley Horn's budget, and they were certainly working out, anyway, not disparaging them at all. Their number was around twenty million. We think it's somewhere between twenty-two-eight and twenty-five-two, depending on type of pipe. And like I say, we're considering some other pipes that could have an impact on that, hopefully in a positive way. But that's where we are, but there is about a million or so savings in the next phase of this that we're looking at. So, that's the short story.
John, the decision on these pipes, I mean, I'm sure the things that make you decide, like now we're talking about all the steel pipes we have and how corroded, and I mean, are there differences in these pipes in terms of life and maintenance?
Yeah. Good question. All of the pipes that are being looked at are some form of chemical compounds, whether it's HDPE, PVC, or a chemical resin and fiberglass and those type of things. So, they all have, nobody will ever say infinite, because we don't know how long plastic is gonna last, but in layman's terms, they're hundred-year type pipes.
They are the best technologies for this.
Best, today's technology, and all of them are that way. They're just different types of manufacturing processes. We're gonna bid whatever we agree to, staff level-wise. We're gonna bid them all and give the contractors and the pipe manufacturers, put them in that competitive, so that we get the most competitive. We're not gonna limit it to one.
So, these, all three of these would be options?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then, so it just comes, and we'll ask the contractor to specify the type of pipe that he's gonna use in locations. He may want to use a different pipe in the shallow location, and a different pipe in the deep location. We'll let them do that, because all of these pipes are acceptable to us, or anything that we put in there will be an acceptable product. But the, and then, the numbers that we're getting are numbers, when you call the manufacturer and ask them for a price per foot of this pipe delivered to Odessa, Texas at this depth, you know, this class pipe. When it goes into that bidding process, typically, they know that the other guys don't, so they start manipulating the numbers a little bit. But these are just the retail quote prices, and hopefully there'll be some savings. And we've written up these projects. You never know how contractors bid things, but...
John, do you have a feel for the current pricing effect on this? Of the pricing that you have for installation? Did you get that from me?
Yes, we have taken those prices, and then we've worked with a couple of different contractors to help get installation costs per foot, and understanding crossing oilfield pipelines and deep ditches, and understanding all of those things. We've also, one of the concerns early on in the project was the deliverability, because this is thousands and thousands of feet of big diameter pipe. And we've gotten written confirmation that we address in here, that all the major pipe manufacturers have told us in writing that they can meet our schedule for delivery. Once they got a PO, purchase order from a contractor, they could go to work and start making pipe. We even talked with Tom and the staff about maybe the city ought to pre-buy the pipe ahead of time, if it was gonna be a lagtime issue, but they've assured us that it's not. So...
So, this price includes the installation?
Yes, ma'am. That's tax, title, and license. I hope.
So, just one question, just because I don't...
I don't wanna be a little bitter and get nervous when you answer me that hard.
Because I don't know, I don't know the answer, but on all these, I mean, this sounds like a huge amount, this pipeline, see seventy-eight or nine pipelines?
Seventy-six, yes, ma'am.
Can they refuse to, I mean, does this happen irregardless? I don't know this process. Is this a big problem? I guess, I'm sorry. These seventy-six pipelines we have to cross.
Our news media lady's still here, so I'll temper my answer. Gary's behind his head. I saw you were still here. They cannot refuse the city of Odessa. We have an easement. We have the right to build a city facility there. In some cases, they've crossed our easement after we were there in nineteen eighty-two. They didn't know about it, and they just did it. In fact, they even drilled a well, and we're trying to talk about whether we might have to adjust an easement a little bit around the well location. But there's only one of those that we found. They can make things very, very difficult. Mr. Marrero and Mr. Kerr can tell you, it held up the eighty-seventh straight apartment project for three or four months, crossing one pipeline with a city street. Beaton Bow's having the same thing with the same pipeline. Five years ago, the streets were built on top of that same pipeline and had none of those issues. A church parking lot was built on top of that pipeline with none of those issues. So, I can't answer that. We've made contact with all of them. We've had their representative in the field, and we uncovered their pipe. They know that this is coming. The bigger companies have specific crossing agreements where they tell you what you can do. A lot of that is bluff, because DOT sets the regulations, if it's a DOT line, and their requirements are always greater than the DOT requirements. So, you get into that little bit of stuff, and that's part of what we're getting paid to help y'all get those things worked out. It's never easy. Some of them are two-inch flow lines that are just laying on top of the ground, or that are, you can see, are eight inches deep or ten inches, you know, that are very shallow, that are not gonna be a problem, that pipeline contractors know how to cross those, and they'll just cross them and suspend it and go, and they'll have a company man there while they're doing it, and then keep going. But there's not one answer, because there's so many different companies.
But this doesn't create an impossible situ, I mean, it's very manageable.
I think they could be, I would expect they won't be as difficult as we could be afraid of, but there can be some that will be difficult. But they can't stop the city from being able to serve its citizens under, I would expect that eminent domain and things like that can come into play. So, I mean, they can't shut down a community.
Right. But they claim, they claim certain rights that they're granted by DOT, Department of Transportation, that regulates oil gas transmission lines and stuff like that. Flow lines, not so much. Little gathering lines, not so much. But there are some bigger pipelines there that we're gonna have to go through some hoops with that, and our contractor will have to go through some hoops. What we intend to do, or what we're doing, is paving the way for the contractor, that we've got all the agreements done ahead of time, so that our contractor knows that, and then he can bid the job accordingly.
And we'll know that before we bid. We won't bid without that. But, I mean, if they don't let us cross them, we don't have a line. We're not gonna bluff on the northeast. We're not gonna...
Well, I'm sure there must be a way that we get to. I just didn't know, this seemed like so many, I just didn't know if this was manageable, or if this is like, oh, my gosh.
It's almost twice as many as you can visually see from an aerial photograph of the lines, but when you start getting out there and actually locating them, and we had all the, did all the proper eight-one-one calls, and all the dig test deals and everything.
Other questions?
Another reason, real quick, just on, that this line was relocated, is it was going to be about forty-five feet deep here. And up here will be some places where it's almost exposed out of the ground. So, it keeps our cost exposure. I don't know that it reduced what our original estimates were, but it certainly kept them from going really wild, because it was obvious.
You didn't have to worry, Jack.
I don't want him to.
Alrighty, any other questions? Okay, then we stand adjourned.